All right. This evening we'll have Council Wright here as in communication, Council O'Leary who will be listening to the meetings.
I'm speaking with the word of prayer this evening. By the way, thank you for another great day to take care of the business of the city. God, I pray that you would give us wisdom and grace as we seek to do the very best for our citizens. It's in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed. Good to see you all today. I am mayor for town sitting in for Mayor Rowland, who will be the guy today. So it's like the next item on the agenda, public comments. We don't have any public comments. If you want to have public comments, please call City Hall and have them put onto the agenda ahead of time so that we can hear from the public. We will hear from the public. Next, sole business. We have no old business now, so we will move on to new business. Item one is the GIP project presentation. Council Wright and Director Bart.
Thank you, sir. We're going to have a presentation this evening from Talon Development. I believe it's Mr. Devin Blankenship is going to come. If you want to go ahead and make him wear the podium. They're going to be making a presentation tonight regarding formal housing, workforce housing development they're putting forward in the city of Centerville. And it's just an informational meeting here for us to hear a little bit more about what they are proposing and further action will be taken on the side of later council meeting.
So first off, good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having us today. We appreciate your time and hearing our presentation. We are proposing to build a seventy-three unit apartment complex. We have named it Century Apartments. Through this package, you'll see a little bit about us. First off, it's Talon. It's myself and my father, Ken Blankenship. We've been doing this for combined over thirty years. Myself been doing this for twelve years. We've done these styles of developments all over Georgia, also down to South Carolina, Texas, Louisiana, and Alabama. And those are pictures. You can't see me. There's pictures. You know, we believe in this housing. I know every company has a mission statement of sorts. We have done market rate. We've done retail, we've done commercial developments. This style of project is truly our passion. It's the one thing that we decided to stick with. Prior to starting Talon three years ago, we were at one of the biggest developers, currently top fifty in the U.S. They were doing it full gambit, and we learned that this is the type of housing, these are the type of projects that actually can reach people and help improve their lives. So, you know, when we have a mission statement, like you can see up there, and you can read our website, it's something that we truly believe in, and we back up our mission statement with our actions. When we come into a city such as Centerville, we come in to be a partner and a community member. We're not here to build something, get out and sell it. We're here so that you see this face until it looks as old as my father's face on the previous slide. So we're hopefully here to stay, and we welcome your input on the project throughout the design process, permitting process, and the life of the project. So, you know, hopefully this is not the only time that we get to talk and certainly grab my contact information if you have any questions. We are partnered, and my partners are here today with Grove Key Ventures, Paul Smith, Grove Wyslock, Tim Smith, and Robert. They've been doing this for as long as we have. They've been on a different side of the business, recently got into the development world. We have two other projects with them right now. One is under construction. Another one is about to close here in a couple of months and begin construction. And both of those are similarly sized to the proposal that we have for Centerville. This is just a small list of some projects in the past that we've done. I tried to mix it up to show you the size for our experience. We've done everything from a, you know, three-hundred-unit market rate deal to a fifty-unit workforce deal in South Carolina. These are just some of the highlights, and I'm assuming that you guys can get this presentation and share it with anyone of interest, but these are all built, leased up, one hundred percent well-run properties that we have, and they are all in the Georgia markets. This is a fuller list. If you were ever interested to see all of our experience, this is every deal on this list minus one. I personally designed and managed the construction of, done the budget, hired the management company, and worked with the management company on running that project. Many of these, Ken Blankenship, my father, is still an owner in. One of the things of this program, as I mentioned, we don't build it and sell it and get out. We own these things for thirty years. So you're not looking at an owner that's going to come in here and make it look pretty, sell it, and then a new owner come in and say, "Well, I don't like these shrubs and I don't care about landscaping." We are the owners, we are your neighbors, and we're going to be there for the long term. Just a couple example projects here. It's full gambit. I've got some better pictures for the project we're proposing here. We are seeking a letter of support from the GIP community for Centerville. We have gotten these letters in the past. These are the three letters that we have gotten, some directly with Talon, some from our partners, and some with our previous stop called Prescott Development. One is recently as April twenty-twenty-one, and that was from Liberty County, GIP community to build a project in Long Island, Georgia. So now getting into a little bit more of the project specifics. We are proposing a seventy-three unit deal, mixture of one, two, and three bedroom units. The site, if you don't know it, it's kind of a challenging site. It is seventeen acres. It's quite large. We're probably only going to disturb about six, maybe seven acres, depending on dirt needs. It's just up the street from here on Houston Lake Boulevard, kind of across from that Dollar General. It is a challenging topo site. Upon our site inspection, we did find an existing gas line. There is a sewer line that also runs in the middle of the site. You can kind of see where these are denoted on the site plan to the right. That yellow line going down is a gas line, and that purple line is a sewer line. We've spoken with representatives that own the gas line, and we are hoping to leave it in place. We have their easement area and our required setbacks, and this site plan accomplished us not having to touch that. The good part about this being such a big site and the way that we're designed the site is that we did look at doing two phases. We decided that that would be a little too intrusive, so we are able to accomplish a large acreage of tree save area, which I think will be beneficial overall to the project. And we keep the building up close to the road. You can kind of see when you drive to Houston right there, it's a little bit of a blind view making that corner there. So taking out some trees will help. There's also no currently sidewalks on that street right there, so part of our scope is adding sidewalks for pedestrian access. To the left, you'll see some elevations. These are elevations specific to the project. We don't just get generic elevations from past projects. We throw them up there. My architect does a study, so these are elevations for what they are proposing. Let's see. Yeah, I think we'll get to some three-D renderings elsewhere. This is another elevation. So with the topo, it's going to be a split level. The building itself will be a three- and four-story building. Parking will be on the front end, all circus parks per the previous slide. And we also do a number of amenities, obviously targeted toward our family tenancy. We'll have a playground, which I can't compete with that New Parks playground, but I'll do my best. We do have a playground plan. Our management company that we'll be bringing on board, they've been doing this for fifty years, and they are a partner of ours that really engage with their tenants, with planning their programs, getting activities for not just the kids, but for the parents. They'll do everything from, you know, financial and job training to, you know, programs for after hours, hosting events, everything. So we have a large indoor community space that will have a warming kitchen, which will include a refrigerator, and sink and microwave, and just an area to make our gatherings happen. Also, we'll have the outdoor playground, as I mentioned, and we're planning an outdoor pavilion with barbecues and picnic pavilions, as well as an activity lawn, which is a sod area for kids to play in. As well, in the building, which by the way, this will be an open breezeway, controlled gate, and access control throughout the property, we'll have a fitness center. And within our community space, we have a computer lab, which is, we designed it more like a coworking space, which everyone's heard of what coworking is nowadays, but it used to be used to throw some computers into a room, and, you know, it's very bland. We activate that area, especially in this day and age. A lot of people are still working from home. We found the past couple of projects doing that cowork areas really helped them get out of their apartment, go have a place to meet with others, to do some coordination stuff, have Zoom calls. We have private meeting desks in those cases as well. So it's a very activated amenity package that we planned. I have an interior design group. You see that bottom right photo that, you know, I wish I could come get them to do my house because everything they do looks amazing. They've been doing it for thirty years. I've personally done, every single project I've done has been with the same interior design group. So it's going to be one of those things that, once it's built, you can get in there and take a little tour, and I think you might have some ideas for your own house as well. So this gets into a little more of those exteriors. These are still just the two-D renderings. Colors may vary. A lot of the coloring we have now is for products that are available on the market as of today, which if you've done construction, things that are available as of today might disappear as of tomorrow. So we pick what we can for the best now, but this is what we strive to deliver from an exterior standpoint. And then you've got some three-D renderings of pavilion that we're proposing as well. This is general site plan, so you'll see the circus parks. You'll see on the left side, the size of the site we're talking about, all seventeen acres, just over seventeen. It also shows you the full size of those gas and sewer lines up in the site. It was one of the reasons we decided not to do two-phase deal, the complications of that, and just the way the site lays out. And additionally, you'll see circus parks, detention pond. The site slopes fairly heavily from Houston all the way to the back of the site, where that pond is over there to the left. I can't point, but yeah, to the left side. So we are expecting to have to bring in some haul and dirt and maybe clear a little bit of extra trees outside of our actual building footprint to get the dirt to work out. But it sets up very well for having a pond on the back, and we don't anticipate any drainage issues for the site. So here is some three-D renderings. This would be if you're standing on Houston Lake, looking at our building, into the site. This would be our main entry point into the building, would be just around this corner here, which would be better shown in the next slide. All of our exteriors were thirty percent brick, and the rest is hardy on our façades. The hardy is a four-year warranty product, so we're not going cheap. There's no vinyl siding. And we do a two-tone tank scheme to mix up our façades, and then obviously you can see the architectural setbacks and bump outs to create some action in the facade as well so that you're not driving by it every day and getting bored of looking at it. This is a back corner, kind of where that detention pond area was, you saw on the site plan side looking up. This shows the slope of the site a good bit better. You can see our parking has to turn down. Right about in the center of that building will be the split wall to bring it down, and so the backside of the building facing the trees will be a four-story section. The three-story section will be at the front of the property. I can't point out here, but you can kind of see, if you look up in the corner of the building, that's where we planned for our outdoor picnic pavilion. That's also where our main entrance to the building will be for our leasing signage. We try and activate that area. There will be some gas parking in that area. Also on our site for all of our projects, we do EV, electric vehicle charging stations as a standard. And then at the far left of this picture here, you'll see that's where our playground is planned to be. Additionally, that's where our activity lawn, sod area, will be as well. So again, mentioning the interiors. This is from a unit that we recently completed within the past three years. This is a staged unit, but it gives you an idea of the sizes for one, twos, and three bedrooms. Most of our kitchens, I'd say probably about ninety-five percent of them will have kitchen islands. We've got a lot of feedback from tenants that live at our properties. They prefer the islands instead of a bar, just because you can try and put a dining space in these apartment units, but it doesn't really work out to allow a dining table. So we found the island serves as that gathering place for families to eat breakfast and dinner. We're also, you know, we have certain requirements for our kitchen sizes, so we're not coming in here and putting micro kitchens that you can't actually cook in. They're full-size kitchens, full-size refrigerators, full-size stove, microwave, built-in decaf tree pantries, et cetera. We also are a natural green building services certified building, which is same as, you know, LEED, whatever program you may have heard of. So it's LED fixtures, it's low-flow fixtures for plumbing, and all of our building materials have a seminal process that we go through a third party to review to make sure that they are all green certified building materials. For this project, you'll see on the floors, we do an LVP, luxuriously vinyl plank product on our floors that will go through the kitchens, the dining rooms, the bathrooms, and then we keep carpet for the bedrooms. We do carpet for bedrooms mainly because that's the feedback we've gotten from tenants in the past that prefer that carpeted feel as opposed to the wood-looking material. So part of the package we submitted for GIP was, you know, zoning compliance. My team has done this, as I mentioned, for thirty-plus years. I've used the same architect for the past ten years. I've used the same civil engineer for the past five, six years. They, they're proactive. As soon as we get this award, you know, we get in, we speak to the city officials, we talk about the zoning requirements, and not just the zoning requirements. We talk about what they want to see with the project. We know that zoning is, you know, we need the zoning, we have the codes, but sometimes that extra step above code is what's really desired, and we have no problem going back and looking and making sure that we can accomplish that for this project. So I charge my design teams to really come in here, get to know you guys, because I know that we're not just going to be talking to you on the front end. We're going to be talking to your inspectors, we're going to be talking to, you know, your council members about this project. So we do a deep dive in our zoning conditions. On top of our zoning conditions, we have certain other state requirements that already go above what just standard zoning requires, such as building sustainability, architectural requirements on the outside of the building, and the materials that we use for the project. All of those are above standard codes. We've also already spoken with our utility providers for Centerville. Plant and Introduce, obviously, is our power company. They have approved power for the project and have a capacity. And same utility company, showing that we have water and sewer capability at the site. Few references for Canada, I know that you had some questions over those. You know, I could go in detail on them, but, you know, please reach out. Hopefully they don't say anything bad about me. So, you know, tread lightly, but yeah, through references, all of which we've worked with for many years, some of them, we've had partners within the deals, some of them have, you know, been my boss on other deals, so certainly please feel free to reach out with them. Project timeline. So this project is being submitted to the state in May nineteenth. They take about four or five months to awards typically here. The award is approved in November. We immediately start doing design. Our goal here would be to design for about six months and submit for permitting sometime in June, with a close on financing and construction notice proceeding in August of twenty-twenty-four. My contractor will tell you he's going to build it in fourteen months. I'll tell my contractor that in sixteen months, and we both land on eighteen months. So, you know, we'll finish sometime in that late twenty-twenty-five-ish timeline and hope to begin lease-up January of twenty-twenty-six. We've also already had a market study done for this project. There is, you know, as I'm sure you guys are aware, there's a need of housing in general. I use the term affordable housing because it's not just program affordable housing, it's just housing prices are astronomical for pretty much anyone looking to buy a house. This market study, you know, shows that this product is of high need, is very low capture rate for our project. I think you just, you guys just had a similar project complete just down the road that's looking to go phase two. Both of those phases are basically leased up, not even completed construction, so market study proved very positive. Our rents are, you know, below other units or right at where they need to be. We will also have quote-unquote market rate units as part of this project to go with the affordable housing. So that was my quick spiel. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that anyone may have, and again, I appreciate your time.
The only question I had as you were going through was where in the world is Flemington, Georgia? But I didn't while you were doing it.
Yeah, right by Hansville.
That's not one that I had aware of. No, I thank you for coming to make your presentation. Again, there'll be some future action taken with by council after the GIP team. That's a chance to do their work. Do you have any other questions before we...
I hope this is done. We will be final vote to whether we include or not at the event meeting on that. That's what it's going to be.
I did have a question. The title of this housing is called Word Century or something?
Century Apartments.
Okay. Anything? Anything further? Yeah, I was looking at a note here. Is that gated community?
We don't typically do gated communities as far as vehicular access, but the interior of the building, even our breezeways, they do have gates. It's all controlled access with a lock. So you cannot get into the building without management buzzing you in, and our call boxes for our tenants, they can't just buzz in. Anyone visiting, they have to physically go down there and let them into our gates. We also have, with our controlled access, it will be security cameras covering our amenities, outdoor spaces. We cover our trash, and we cover the entry of the building. You can't see it because, you know, obviously we don't have interior design, but our management company will have a full window view of the entrance to the property as well.
How many entrances are there to the complex?
One vehicular entrance, and then there will be probably, I'd say anywhere from six to eight pedestrian entrances, but again, they will all be controlled by key locks.
So you come in and out of the same one, road to Austin, right?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for coming out, and I'm sure we'll be speaking with you quite a bit more on this. As I said, the next meeting in a second, we will be having a final vote to decide whether to award the points. And I have anything further on this?
Well, thank you for your time, and, you know, we certainly look forward to hopefully getting your support. And in the meantime, for that meeting, you have Tim's information, my information's on this presentation. Please do your job. We'll have to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. The next item we have is the ordinance to amend the, to amend an ordinance on responsible dog ownership. That is for Council O'Leary and Chief Duncan.
You can be free.
A couple weeks ago, we had an incident where a dog ran from a yardway and went into the roadway and did a pedestrian, a pedestrian trying to go herself, but she went down and was bitten a couple of times by a feline. After reviewing the case and the ordinance that was being used, we found that there was a change in the state law, which caused us to have to change our paperwork to match the state law. And what we did is we used a verbiage from the state law within our policies and the paperwork to designate a vicious dog and a dangerous dog. And we have two different forms, plus the ordinance needs to be amended to show that we did make the changes, which are in red on the do ordinance that we have.
Okay. Thank you. So with that said, I'll make a motion that we adopt this ordinance for responsible dog ownership.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Actually, I have a question, and Becky wrote this up for me. So what we're saying is that all of the changes that are made in this copy, the words that are struck, the words that are read are, we're not really writing our own ordinance here, we're just amending our ordinance to be compliant with state law.
That's correct. We are. The state law had changed, so we had references to state law in our code that were outdated. So yes, we are amending so that our ordinance mirrors state law.
Anything further? I have no questions. So we'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right. Pass this ordinance. The next item we've given is another ordinance. It is an amendment for the zoning administration ordinance. And what is going on here is that we are going to pass on the zoning application fee to the customer rather than the city taking on that fee. And the fee has been increased from one hundred to one hundred and fifty dollars.
And we're requiring, now the applicants also reimburse the city for the cost of the state-required advertising, which is quite expensive. So that will have to be reimbursed to the city prior to the final action on the zoning decision. A hundred and fifty dollars will be submitted with their application.
Director Brunko, I hope I just didn't take everything.
Oh, sir, you did fine.
Did you have any further?
You covered it. It's fine. Basically, what we're doing is some housekeeping.
I said it because I just had it told me at the end. It was fresh in my mind, so I'm going to go ahead and...
Thank you, sir.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
To approve the ordinance, I agree. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? No discussion, so we'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right. We're on a roll with ordinances. So item number, item number four is another ordinance on water and sewer connection fees. Director Brunko.
Same thing, sir. We're just doing some housekeeping, updating our ordinance to the correct fees that mayor and council approved in the latter knee. And I'm not going to go through and read them all, but we've gone over twice. So what we're looking for tonight is just approval to update this ordinance so we can update our fees on unit code, make a match.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
Sure moves.
Second.
All right. We had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We discussed it twice already, so I figure it's probably been covered. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right. Now, to move on one more time, item five is another ordinance to amend the garbage collection fees. Again, this is something we've already previously discussed and approved. This is just the ordinance which puts that into effect.
That's correct, sir.
Need, need you further to add on that?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve these.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side? We had a lot of ordinances today. That was the last one. So, our last item, item six is appointment information on the, the addition of water and sewer vehicles. So, Director Brumford, tell me.
Thank you, sir. What we have is, we wanted to add a new pickup truck in, in this year's budget, this year's current budget. But it's, it's been very, very hard to get pickup trucks this year. We finally, at the end of this year, found one truck that, that is compatible to what we need, but it was three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars over what we had previously approved in the budget. So, I, I spoke with Ms. Carol, our city accountant, and we, we decided that, that three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars could be absorbed in another line item in this year's budget. So, we went ahead and purchased, purchased the vehicle, and I wanted to do it as a point of information tonight, just to let y'all know. That we had purchased a vehicle and where the money was coming from.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on this this night?
I don't have anything, sir.
So, thank you for the appointment information.
Thank you, sir.
And that is the last item. So, we'll move on to comments and ask all the councilmen.
I don't really have any other comments to make today, other than to say that I think they will need to adopt an ordinance to make it illegal for anybody with a better mustache than me to be able to attend county meetings. Good to see Jim Taylor here this evening, as always. Always glad to see Haptap, you made it here hanging out with us. It's all for you, thank you.
I'll go last, so that kids can maybe, you know, have a chance to see who's last.
Yep.
Wasted opportunity right there.
I don't have too much. I'm happy that my first meeting as Mayor Brumford was not too stressful or difficult. Just a lot of ordinances. Just wanted to note that we do have the first food truck Friday scheduled. It's gonna be on May the fifth, St. Louis. And I don't remember. Oh, that's true. We have the Centerville cleanup, spring cleanup. It's coming on this, it's going this week. So, you put your extra trash out with your regular trash on your regular trash day. And if they, by some chance, do not get to it on that day, they will pick it up the next morning. No tires, hazardous materials, or
Construction.
Construction materials can be picked up. Other, other things are fair game. I don't think I have anything else. So, at this time, you'll conclude me.